That's what I had to do as well.
You mean y'all don't use that every day?
Uh, yeah. What you talking about?
Yeah, what, what's the mayor saying?
I know I'm not hearing an eight thousand dollar expenditure is not being utilized to its fullest.
I just, I fourth one today, so I, I think I get it. You're getting your money's worth out of me.
I know for you, for sure.
You, you using it, using it right now? What you talking about?
Yeah, I'm on it right now. Can't you see?
Yeah, I think, I think. I think, I think.
Just everybody, you are, you are live.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I think we just lost, lost a lot of, a lot of the gusto with the, um, with the whole COVID and the, the sheltering in place and so forth. But, once we get past that, a lot of the stuff that we're trying to do will go back into full effect. So, alright, uh, I now, uh, call the order at seven oh two PM. And can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Wallace.
President.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey. Councilmember Emily Hill.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Wallace. Councilmember Deja Hill.
Here.
Councilmember Krupa. Jane.
Can't tell if he's on mute or not.
President.
Okay, thank you.
I was on mute, sorry. Alright, we have a call present. And if you can, you know, Tom, since you back, man, can you please do the pledge of allegiance for us?
I sure can. I'm gonna stand up here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I appreciate it, and, uh, we, I know we already said this, but I want to say it again on the record, glad to have you back.
Thank you.
So, we'll put you right back to work like you never left. Alright, uh, moving on to public comments. Do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Alright, moving right on to reports. Uh, reports about items of community interest on which no action will be taken. Uh, up first, we have the Emergency Management Committee Chief.
Good evening, uh, mayor and council members. Um, so the latest on this is we're gonna have to call a meeting of the committee just to kind of give y'all, uh, an update, and there's a few things that we need to review. Um, the biggest, uh, kind of advancement that we're moving forward with this is that we're waiting for TDM to give us the approval for the TAP system. And the TAP system is going to allow the process of creating these documents significantly more efficient. Uh, so that's kind of, uh, the biggest thing that we're, we're waiting on. We are on annex E, uh, evacuations of the plan. Uh, so we do have a few documents that we'll, we'll need to review with you guys. So, uh, I would imagine for the committee that we will, um, be, uh, be calling a meeting in next, uh, next few weeks.
Okay, I know we need to add one more port, one more person. So, uh, uh, Yuvia, if, and Tom, if we can add to the next agenda item, um, uh, council voting to fill the vacancy from, uh, former council member Scarborough. We need to do that. And I know there's some things that from this last disaster, uh, that I know we didn't think about and we didn't discuss when we launched the Emergency Management Committee and when we started doing the review of our, of our basic plan. Um, I know we talked about the, the more holistic aspect of our basic plan in, uh, looking into that in the annexes and identifying, uh, local groups and organizations, um, that the city could be able to rely on to work across our jurisdictional boundaries and restrictions. Uh, also kind of regionally. Um, but I think we also need to take another look. Uh, I've talked with County Judge Andy Brown and really, you know, kind of told him and said, uh, what about those no man lands? How are we taking care of those and what's the priority, uh, on who has a priority? And if service and support isn't occurring within a certain amount of timeframe, you know, then how do we, how do we flesh all that out? So we don't have another situation, uh, that again is issues across multiple different locations. And everybody goes head down into the areas that they, that they know about and start forgetting that, you know, they got an ETJ on the west side of the city of Maynor that still belongs to them and they're further east to us. Um, so, so they're, they're forgetting about people. Uh, I think we need to have also, uh, contact information. And now that we have the Emergency Management Committee, we're talking about the annual training that needs to occur. Annual review of contacts, you know? We now have contact information, key contact information for utility companies in a way that we didn't have before. So how do we make sure we're, we're reviewing those contacts and, and making sure we have them up to date, uh, on a yearly basis? So if something ever did happen again, we're not, they're now trying to make phone calls and people are like, oh, I don't work there no more. I don't know who is there and all that type of stuff. Um, so, uh, this, this things to, that I think we should definitely have conversations and look into. Uh, I'll, I'll pass the mic over to the Mayor Pro Tim, because him and I did do a lot of this talking, uh, uh, during that week of the storm. Of just additional things that we need to try to incorporate to, to really set ourselves up for success. I know that, uh, the, the president and CEO of the Central and South Texas American Red Cross definitely wants to have us at the table for a more regional inclusion of, of, of how do we make sure, um, disaster preparation is in place. Um, so I want to make sure we take big advantage of that as well. Um, because my concern is really that we have an approved plan, county has an approved plan. Look, Austin, all they have an approved plan, approved plan, but, uh, there's still huge gaps within them. And, uh, they probably haven't even really read the plans themselves either to know who has priority in funding and, and so forth. So, uh, Mayor Pro Tim?
I was gonna, I'll second that and just say that, um, when we do meet, I can make sure I give you, um, a double check to make sure you have all the numbers that we did find. Um, I put, uh, saved most of everything I found in my phone, so we can just make sure we consolidate those contacts so that you have them and city staff have them. Um, I, I agree on those pieces in regards to, um, updating the contacts and then maybe even, um, exploring, um, you know, how, you know, in our response, you know, if there's anything we could have done to be a little bit more clear. Um, if there's some protocols we want to create so that any of the miscommunication that might have happened in a time period can be clear next time. And, um, then, uh, I got a couple of other questions that I want to bring up when we have our meeting. So, uh, nothing big, just, uh, questions that I'm pretty sure you can answer or help steer in the right way, so.
Yeah, and I, and I think, you know, to expound upon when he's talking about that cross communication. You know, uh, Chief Lydia, we, we were talking, I mean, almost probably what, every thirty minutes to, to a certain degree, uh, on things, and, and people kept reaching out, uh, from, from different areas to try to help and provide support. And, uh, even with the goodwill and, and, and the grace of people being able to help out, uh, some of the planning that we were doing as a municipality, uh, became very complex, uh, because of, because other entities were, were, were tagging into the event with, and individuals on, on ground, uh, uh, stepping up and, and wanting to take charge. But it also kind of went, uh, counter to some of the discussions we had at the more senior level of, of how things were supposed to be coordinated, what assets were supposed to be going to, what residents and what populations and so forth. So, just fleshing those things out, making sure all entities know, uh, what the line of communications need to be. Um, so we don't have people either showing up at the wrong time because another group accidentally put down different times or different locations or a mistake that, uh, resources were supposed to go to everybody except, uh, them actually about probably being dedicated for a, a particular population.
Yeah, and, and last thing, um, I'm, I'm glad to say that, because, um, the last thing I want to add to that was, um, uh, ensuring that we update or give people opportunity now when it's not the, uh, the winter storm to, to fill out necessary paperwork about, you know, them being available so that there can be a process of requesting the support. So I think that it helped with preventing some of the random things that was going on. But we have kind of like a list of people, uh, similar to that finger documentation process we tried to do last time COVID first started, where people kind of, they self-report or they complete the form and the paperwork and they're vetted and they're, you know, entities that the cities, it is, um, communicates ahead of time. Look, uh, we have a disaster, we were gonna call you and we're gonna call you specifically for this.
Yeah, that kind of thing, so people knows. And especially, and then for all those people that did volunteer, where they can complete that bot, that, uh, volunteer paperwork so that they can be called, uh, some type of way, so it can be more, so it can be organized. So we're gonna have, you know, people that want to help but don't know how to get in contact with us. And then we also don't have, um, other people launching other things to create confusion, and we can be more succinct. So just, fine, Tony. Well, I, I think I'll cut you off, Chief. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I was just gonna say, and all in all, you know, I think that we handled the storm pretty well. The community came together and we were resilient as a community, which you just don't see. And we were providing, uh, necessary water and food uh, in the midst of the storm where other communities were waiting for things to, you know, cool down. But people needed, you know, right then. So, you know, every situation that we're gonna run to is gonna be different and something in the plan is not gonna be, happen exactly as it's intended or, or we're gonna have to jump away from, from it to, you know, help, you know, a neighboring community. Or we're gonna have to, you know, how we're gonna figure out each different disaster or incident i- is gonna be different. But all in all, I am extremely proud of our elected officials, our city staff, uh, you know, Lydia and, and Denver. Everyone came together and we really took care of the community, uh, and their needs. There's always gonna be, you know, stuff to identify for next time. And unfortunately, or fortunately, how, you know, however you look at it, you know, these things don't occur so often. So we're always gonna have, um, uh, some shortcomings. But for the most part, I think that our community really came together and supported each other and, uh, and did an outstanding job. Uh, yeah, our after-action reports that we do for our emergency management. We had our first one, we've, we've identified some issues internally of things that are gonna better prepare us for next time. You know, stuff that John Q. Public doesn't see, and a lot of it has to do with communications and communication with, you know, who outside of our entity and, and when it's appropriate to contact those people. And even communication abilities themselves is a, I'm sure a lot of y'all experienced some really bad, um, cellular data connections and what, that is extremely frustrating. Imagine if this were something, uh, a lot more horrific than a, than, you know, what we experienced. And, uh, not having those communication abilities is, is vital. And so we're looking at some options on, on best way to, to, uh, resolve that, that shortcoming. But, uh, absolutely, we, you know, we can get more in-depth in, uh, in our, uh, next emergency management meeting and, uh, but, you know, all in all, the, of course, there's, there's things that we can improve and, and prepare, and that's what, you know, this committee's for. But I'm very, very proud of, of everyone and, and the resiliency of our community.
Oh, yeah, no, definitely. I, I don't think you're gonna have anybody advocate anything different. I think, uh, a- a- again, the third time, uh, for a third disaster leading the way in support, um, from, from all different areas, all different levels. Uh, and I think the stuff we're talking about right here, uh, one is to let the community know that we are talking about it and that we saw it and we were having those discussions during the storm. But two, uh, tying into the concept we've always been talking about this whole last year, which is just because we're doing it, doesn't mean future leadership is gonna do it. So how do we put these things in the document? So, future leadership, when you're out the seat, Tom's out the seat, Lydia's out the seat, council shifted over two or three different times, there's a document that says, no player, you're supposed to be doing this, right?
Right.
Um, and, and, and that's really what we're kind of talking about. Definitely no fault to anybody. Everybody did what they needed to do and took care of people, uh, found a ways to take care of people. Hats off, one hundred, two hundred percent. Um, again, my big piece, my big focus, and why I wanted to have this piece of the discussion as a report, is we saw what we did, how do we make sure future leadership does the same thing?
Exactly.
Alright, any, anything, any other remarks from council?
No, just, good job, good job, everyone.
Sounds good. With no additional remarks, we will move on to, uh, reports under healthcare. Uh, Councilwoman Deja Hill regarding Black Mamas ATX program.
Um, you all may remember a couple of months ago, maybe, um, when it first kind of came up in mentioning how, um, the organization, Black Mamas ATX, um, received a grant from UT Austin, um, from Impact Austin, sorry, um, UT Austin received a grant from Impact Austin, uh, to fund a project REACH, which is racial equity and access for collaborative healthcare, um, for the community of Maynor, Texas. And so, since UT Austin, um, their School of Social Work helped launch the Black Mamas ATX, um, organization, um, they were chosen to help implement this project REACH in Maynor. And their, their work centers around the health and well-being of black women who are pregnant, um, through their first year postpartum. And so, um, not just women older, but also teens, so black teen women, so any age to be pregnant. Um, so any way, they were, the goal of the project is to improve access to reproductive health services to black women over the childbearing period in Maynor over a twelve-month period, which started December twenty twenty. And so, they've been in the works, um, Congress, uh, sorry, Congress, sorry, I put you in a place. And so, me and Councilmember Ann, me and Councilmember Ann have been attending some of the meetings with, uh, some of the people from, um, Black Mamas ATX and some of the other, um, partners who were looking to partner with, um, with Black Mamas ATX in order to be able to, um, make this program project successful in Maynor. And so, um, they have a MOU out there that's available. And there's one that's available for the city of Maynor to participate in, as well as the other parties to move towards the success, the success of the REACH project. And so, um, the portion, the scope of what the city would be looking to, um, or what they had in mind for the city, if we wanted to partake in to the MOU with them, would just be to, um, recruiting, um, recruiting pregnant individuals, um, to send them to those services that Black Mamas ATX would be able to provide. Um, also, if we had the ability to assist with identifying and providing space, um, so that they can come to our city, because they're housed in Austin, um, to provide services as needed, and then also just, um, collaborating on data collection, um, for project outcomes. Um, so the MOU is only for a year, um, just a year commitment unless for any reason it had to be cut short. And then if, um, if we went into the agreement with them, you can always renew it as time goes on. So, um, I think I can answer a question before anyone else asks. What are the other parties that were gonna be, um, a part of this MOU? So it's not like fully based on, um, the city, um, to do everything, but other partners that were looking into that agreement for Maynor is the Maynor Independent School District, um, the Peoples Community Clinic, the Austin Regional Clinic, and then of course, um, UT Austin.
Yeah, sounds good. I appreciate it. And I believe I had received that MOU that, uh, please let me know if I'm incorrect, uh, especially, uh, Yuvia, Lydia. Um, I thought I received it and I thought I potentially forwarded. If that's not the case, then Deja, can you get a copy of it and, and shoot it over to City Hall? So they can do what they need to do, the legalese aspect of it?
Right, I will. And, um, there was a copy of the MOU, but it was just a draft. And so it, um, from their end, from the UT side, they just needed a little bit more information to fill in. And then it will, it's gonna go back to them and then it'll come back to us for, uh, for legal and Yuvia and everyone to look at it.
Okay, any idea when they're talking about trying to start services out this way?
Um, because the project already started, um, December, um, for them to start gathering and collecting, they, I want to say the timeline has already begun, because I think when, uh, me and Ann were speaking with them, they were already, um, available and ready to look for, um, referrals and things like that. So I know they're in communication with the school district for that piece. And, um, they just kind of know a lot of people around here in the Maynor community to help from the women's side.
Yeah, uh, go ahead.
Oh, and I was gonna say, the biggest fun part is that, um, the cost piece is not, there's not really a big cost. There's no coster that they're asking from us, just whatever we want to contribute. That would be a cost that we incur.
Got it. Contributed such as, contributors such as what?
Um, like if we had, if it's our space, um, if we wanted to offer a space to them, then it would be us offering that space, because we want to. There's no financial, we would incur the cost of them being in our space. I don't know if that makes sense, Lydia.
I, basically, if we want to provide.
It does.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. But I, but I think the MOU, once this finalized, would have much more details to that, too.
Yeah. Any other questions? From the group? Alright, appreciate it, Deja. Uh, moving on to the American Heart Association, Councilwoman Weir.
Yes. So, um, American Heart Association, their big month for elevating awareness, uh, one of their big months is February, which we just came out of. And with that, I was working with their co- community impact director for Central Texas, Catalina Berry. And they do a big year, every year of the Go Red for Women. So we, with COVID and everything, a lot of it was virtual and through social media. So we, um, they sent out a few things and I was able to post some things on social media. And then, uh, just encouraging women, um, to do the Go Red program. Their National Wear Red Day is February fifth. Um, so that was a big day to post and wear red and do that. But along with the city, uh,'s help and all of the council members here, we were able to get a proclamation for, uh, February the third, twenty twenty-one here, uh, from Maynor to declare that, uh, a national, uh, Wear Red Day. So they were very, very excited about that. Um, the, just to tell a little bit, the Go Red, uh, for women is the American Health Association's national movement where they want to end, uh, heart disease and strokes in women. And we were basically trying to promote and ask all women everywhere, but I was particularly focusing on the Maynor area at this time, to wear red and use that as a way to remind you to make a commitment to stand together and to take charge of your own heart health, as well as anyone close to you that you love that may have art, heart issues, as I do in my family. Um, so that's, we were passing out flyers. Um, Walmart let me make little flyers and attach them to the pharmacy bags to promote that, uh, to when people came to the pharmacy area, they were able to see information regarding that. And they, last thing they did is, we usually have a luncheon where, um, women come together and share their different stories of, um, heart issues and stroke issues and try to, uh, evaluate and, uh, raise awareness. That had to be done virtually this year, so that was kind of different, um, to attend that. It was on February the twenty-fourth, uh, from eleven fifteen to eleven thirty, and it was their seventh annual Austin Go Red for Women Luncheon. And they had speakers and everything like that, so we were spreading awareness that way as well. And that's pretty much, we're gonna continue working on some other programs and try to have something every couple of months to help promote and get the word out here in Maynor and kind of just get them familiar with Maynor and Maynor familiar with American Heart Association.
Sounds good. Appreciate it. Uh, any questions for, uh, for Ann?
Uh, no question, just a comment if I could. When you all, um, in your service with these different organizations, identify a color, um, we can have our tower illuminated in that color for any of those days that are specifically set aside, uh, with just a day's notice. And so, um, just want to put that out there that if there's a color associated with one of the events that you're, uh, participating in, we can light our tower that color.
Awesome, thank you. See, look at the city, just helping me out every kind of way, just wrapping me up and all of it. And I love it. I love it.
And sometimes people say, why is it red? And it'll give us a chance to, to respond.
Yeah, to have that conversation, yeah, to open up the dialogue. I love it. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Any other, uh, remarks? There being none, appreciate it. Moving on to the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, uh, Councilwoman Emily Hill.
You can't tell if she's on mute or not.
Yeah, she's still on mute.
Sorry. Okay, so in case, um, some of y'all may have forgotten the Governor's Challenge. So this, this is part of it. So the SMBF is the Service Members, Veterans and Their Families, um, along with the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. Um, so what this is supposed to do is it's supposed to implement best practices by using public help. Um, so I did, uh, read that VA announced their full support for the new nine eight eight number. So like nine one one for suicide prevention for veterans and their families, um, even non-veterans. I just found out too, there's this new nine eight eight number that's gonna be launched, uh, next year, twenty twenty-two, uh, in July. So I'm taking this whole year of, um, gathering information. I've been attending a lot of, uh, different meetings, um, on the, the mapping crisis, um, intercept. And that's, um, it's, that's collecting a lot of data. Um, so I am currently going to start building a team of different specialists from different fields um, of the area, both medical, um, both mental health. And, um, that's supposed to help in, um, in using these practices, um, bringing in data from Maynor. Because Maynor, it, it's, I know Travis County was doing it, but it's, you know, Maynor's growing and we're gonna need these resources. Um, it's, it's, it's free, so it's not something that, you know, we're all gonna have to pay for, um, eventually. It, it is part of the challenge. Um, but, uh, I am attending monthly, uh, mapping process meetings. So it's kind of like going to school. And, um, I'll be doing that for the rest of the year, getting a team together. And then by next year of July of twenty twenty-two, this new nine eight eight number will be launched. And we will have a big post, a big, you know, advertising deal to, so that way everyone in Maynor is aware that this is out and how important it is. And, um, we definitely want Maynor to be a part of it, and this is a great opportunity. It's also a great opportunity to collaborate with, um, Ann, with you, um, and also with Black Mamas as well. It's also a great opportunity to collaborate with um Anne, with you, um and also with Black Mamas as well. Um so uh everybody is informed of this new thing. So and 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 it does, I know they, they mentioned that it does take a lot off of the 911 um number and and um capacity for that, you know, so this will really help. It'll direct people to the right, the right departments, the right people. When someone needs to talk to someone right then and there and not have to be sent to this person or that person or, you know, we'll give you a number. I know VA has a a crisis prevention uh hotline that they use, that's 24 hours, that will continue. So none of those numbers will change, it's just adding the new 988 emergency line. And that's it for that for now.
No, appreciate it. And you know, to just add some more uh uh information to this, this uh effort, w- we are one of the the smaller cities that uh have been uh invited into this uh and and primarily because of our way of messaging this proactivity and highlighting that uh with us having been designated as a Purple Heart City, the first Purple Heart School District within Central Texas, wanting to really truly reflect what that means. And 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 really uh executing more than just having another uh designation that that we don't do anything uh in support of. And this effort uh, which I believe Lydia and and Emily uh saw is we are directly connected with the Veteran uh of Affairs Department. Um this is, this isn't one of those kinda talking to someone from the local clinic that happens to be a manager. No, this is actually directly talking with the Department of the Veteran Affairs. And the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Administration is an asset that belongs to the US Health and Human Services um uh department. So this, this is a big deal. And some of the things that Emily's being uh asked to take on with this effort is a a subset of this healthcare uh equity in in inclusion and and proactivity. Uh especially with us growing at 2.5% year over year, um you know, who knows about the veteran services that Austin Integral Care started doing about a year, two years ago? Who knows about the different things that community care provides within uh the veteran space? And uh you know, the the homeless programs that the VA has and so forth. So this is a way for the city of Maynor uh to kinda have an advisory team of, I think it was 12 to 15 different types of experts and different types of aspects. Uh just making sure that the city is aware of all the different types of programs and services that are out there. Um because the veterans uh community has tax dollars going to specific services and programs and other efforts um that they can tap into, uh which can also help uh reduce the backlog for for those that don't have those types of support systems. Um as as Emily said. So uh looking forward to this and looking forward to us now having a a more robust effort within healthcare just in general uh from a lot of different angles. Uh any additional questions for Emily? There being none, uh we'll move on to uh C, Education Committee. Back to you, Emily.
Okay, um so what I've been updated on so far, I'll start with libraries. Um so a group of librarians from Maynor ISD are wanting to explore summer and after-school library programs. Which is great, that's, that's a start right there. And permanent library passes um for Austin Public Libraries at no cost. And I'm ready to see that happen like quickly. Um the librarians from the school district would also like to form a subcommittee um of their own to talk about literacy and support the city with the volunteer library along with the future city library. So um there's, there's more to come with that, more um engagements um need to happen. So this is gonna be kinda ongoing until we get something more solidified. Um not sure if Harvey, if you wanna add anything to that, or anything updated that came after me, anything?
Um no, uh really, uh we had a program in the district a couple of years back uh where uh the district approved um six libraries to be open, six elementary libraries in the summertime. And it was um uh six hours of operation during the daytime. I'll tell you what, um uh those district libraries, they had all kinds of programs for the students. And then they also provided uh evening programs uh once a week during the summer where the student could come with their family. And they had a movie night or they featured a a mov- a book that was also a movie and they had popcorn. It was this, you know, opportunity to to really um push literacy and um uh family engagement. And so it was, it was pretty cool. And that's, that's what the uh I think, I'm thinking that they wanted to maybe get back to that kinda stuff, so. So I'm glad that uh we're heading in that direction.
Nah, sounds good. And and yeah, I I know with this committee, we gotta make sure we walk that fine line of of our aspect of supporting uh them. And uh you know, when re- regarding the the city's uh quote-unquote library, uh you know, that ties into our transportation discussion and in in uh tax cap that we're at and 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 lack of sales tax to be able to really uh generate or do anything. Uh but definitely, uh we need to be able to, uh asking you Emily, to relay to um the the members of the committee, at least the conversations we've had on our end, uh that the current volunteer library is a a is a county asset through the he- through the Health and Human Services uh uh um uh department. Uh counties do not oversee or run libraries. Uh so therefore, they have permitted the use of that building to be something that uh the local community needs. And that was one of the asks. Uh so they permitted uh people to volunteer there. Um one of the biggest hindrances or drawbacks that we have is the fact that um unless an organization steps up and signs a MOU, a memorandum of understanding with the county to take ownership, uh day, day-to-day use ownership of that, of that building, um you know, there, there's really no ability to increase uh what's currently occurring there. Um but definitely wanna support the school district in 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 what they want to allow their libraries to do outside of just a regular school hours. And how can we potentially collaborate on grants and funding um to potentially get a librarian part-time or full-time over at the public library? Cuz talking with the Central Texas Library System and the Tucker Foundation uh across the board, they've all said that's really the best number one step forward to getting the library that the community has been uh advocating for year over year. Um so uh definitely that. And whenever you have your meetings, just make sure you let Yuvia know so she can have that documented in um uh uh whatever notes that that you take. She can go ahead and have those filed and made available for anybody. And that goes for everybody's, everybody's kinda meetings that that you have committee meetings wise. Um and if you can also add in there, this is something that Mayor Pro Tim and I, uh Harvey had talked about, I think yesterday or the day before, was rehashing again um the the Lagos Crosswalk. And you know, who's supposed to be funding that? So then we can help continue to push that as that is one of the most dangerous areas crosswalk-wise uh for kids with, within our area. Um a- anything else that I, that I forgot that we kinda talked about, uh Harvey?
No, um I I did uh pass some uh contacts that I've um um have found um to uh uh Councilwoman Hill and um so uh she's aware of that piece. And she was already on her own uh jumping into a lot of that uh that as well. Um the safety protocol for the kiddo, so um hopefully we'll be able to get an answer um soon. You know, definitive. And I think we know kind of some of the history of what what happened in the past, but we just wanna get it clear, clarified, and then see what's gonna happen next.
Right.
Definitely wanna um um stay um in the loop of that situation with the crosswalk. Um but in the meantime, I did reach out to um the president of the school district. Um and she did reach out to uh Maynor uh ISD Police. And they agreed that um the police will monitor that area. Um whether it be in the morning when they go to school or in the afternoon when they leave school to kinda see, uh make sure safety, you know, for safety purposes, since there's no crosswalk there. So uh um there's that for now. We'll see how that goes.
No, appreciate it, appreciate it. Uh any other questions regarding the Education Committee?
Um Mayor, I do need to know when the committee met for the record, please.
Okay. Um uh Councilwoman uh Hill, she, she, if you can shoot her an email when y'all had y'all's committee meeting, so she can um.
Yes, I'm actually putting it all together and sending it to her time and date.
Got it, appreciate it.
I I do need the agenda to be po- um so I can post it on my end, just an FYI.
Okay.
Thank you.
And before we get ready to move on to the consent agenda, one thing I forgot to mention uh under the 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 veteran kind of report, uh those that are veterans are able to get their vaccine shot down at the VA clinics. Um so uh wanted to message that out there. So if if anybody happens to be a veteran, please get the message out to them that all they gotta do is go down to the VA clinic, show, show, show their veteran ID card, uh and there shouldn't be any issues with getting the vaccine. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. All the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless requested by myself or a fellow council member, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Uh item number one is consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the city council minutes of February 24th, 2021. Uh city council called special meeting. And agenda item number two, second and final reading, consideration, discussion, and possible action on ordinance rezoning 10.01 acres, more or less out of the AC Caldwell survey, number 52, abstract 154, Travis County, Texas, and being located at 14719 US Highway 290 East, Maynor, Texas, from agricultural A to heavy commercial C3. And agenda item number three, second and final reading, consideration, discussion, and possible action on ordinance rezoning uh 8.93 acres, more or less out of the AC Caldwell survey, Travis County, Texas, and being located at 13300 US Highway 290 East, Maynor, Texas, from agricultural A to medium cur- commercial C2. Do I have a motion on the floor?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second?
And seconded. Roll call, please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krubu?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion passed. It is moving on to the regular agenda item. Item number four, consideration, discussion, and possible action on a purchase agreement with Terrell Timberman Farms LP for a water easement with temporary construction easement. Samuel?
Yes, Mayor Wallace, Council. I had, yes, Mayor Wallace and Council, this is Sam Kiger. Um this is a purchase contract for a water and temporary construction easement. It's for the US 290 East Waterline. It's gonna serve Maynor Heights and the surrounding area. The price is based on the Travis County appraisal value for the land. And like the previous easements, this is be reimbursable per development agreement.
Got it. Uh do I have a motion on the floor?
I'd like to approve the purchase of the contract with the Terrell and Timberman Farms for the water easement on East 290.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
And seconded. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, roll call, please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krubu?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion passed. It's moving on to agenda item number five. Consideration, discussion, and possible action on a change order to the construction contract for the wa- for the Willbarger Creek Wastewater Treatment and Collection System Improvements Project. Frank?
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. Can y'all hear me all right?
Yes.
Yes. So this uh uh change order is for the Willbarger Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant. Um there were a number of items that um are proposed in here. Uh a number of uh item number one pieces relate to um changes in the administration or the Public Works Building uh to add additional facilities for uh two departments to move in there. So um the original plan was put together pretty quickly to make the adjustments. And these were some final tweaks on uh door car readers and that sort of thing to be able to um uh make the entry and exit controls work best. Um there were some drainage um pieces uh added with the canopy down spout. Um and then there were some additional sludge processing revisions. Uh we had some uh air piping that uh we were hoping to reuse, but were needed to replace. Um there were some orifices that uh were put in the irrigation system that will help it operate more efficiently. Um and then the other item that we had um that was significant was the um uh the installation of the data system improvements in the administration building. And then um at the uh city staff suggestion, uh we put in a separate HVAC system for the IT room. Um a lot of times, IT rooms run pretty hot. And so having a a dedicated uh HVAC system to it will help ensure that all of your equipment in there will last longer, will be more reliable, all those sorts of things. Um and so that's, that's the essence of what's in this change order. Uh this project is getting very close to being finished out. We're within probably about three weeks um of the last of the construction pieces. Um as soon as the data cables are in, uh we can uh move towards occupying. There's one final fire inspection to be done um hopefully in the next week. And um so this phase will be uh buttoned up here in the next few weeks.
Got it. No, motion first. So do I have a motion on the floor?
I'd like to motion that we approve the change order number five to the construction contract for the Willbarger Creek Wastewater Treatment and Collection System Improvement Project with Excel Construction Services LLC in the amount of $53,592.
It's been so motion, do I have a second?
I second.
And I'm gonna give a second to Councilwoman Reer. Any questions to the motion?
Yes, Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Frank.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Okay, I was looking at the contract and with them putting in this uh 1.25 ton Daikon mini shift uh newly split, they're talking about not replacing or repairing either ceiling or electrical conduit-ing or wiring and not providing a thermostat and not providing a pad for
And not providing a pad for the condensing uh, unit. I was wondering who's paying for the repairs? Since this is so close to being finished. And uh, who's actually providing the pad for the condensing unit?
So that's, that's the subcontractor that does that, so the co- the GC will pick that up. But it's, it's complete and in place as, as requested. So that's just the subcontractor that doesn't have that included in it.
Okay, I, you know, it just seemed a little strange, and I just wanna make sure that I understood what was going on, and I do now, thank you very much, Frank.
Okay, sure.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, um, we have a recommendation for approval from staff. Um, but we also, you know, have been told that this is uh, point one nine percent over the budget, so. Is that, that this information item, is that for us to be concerned about? Um. Um, this uh. Uh, can you go into that, that piece either, Scott, or whomever?
Uh, just getting back, I'm, I'm not totally familiar with all of this. Um, I would think that. The cost had been discussed with our finance to make sure that we didn't have any issues. Um, I know there's an amended budget that we're gonna talk about in a little bit as well. Uh, but I, I'm not sure I have that answer for you.
Uh, I could probably answer that, so that it was discussed uh, with myself, Mike, and Frank. Um, a few weeks back, uh, we did, um, because this is, was a bond project. Were utilizing the bond account as well as um, impact fees account, because it does fall within the criteria.
Okay, so um, what it, uh, what did you all have to do for the uh, point nineteen percent?
The what? I, I could barely hear you.
Oh, what did you all have to do for the overage?
The overage, we're using impact fees, which are the restricted fee, it was to our restricted funds.
This, this qualifies for use of the restricted funds? Is what I'm, is what I'm hearing.
That is correct.
That's correct.
Because it's a, it was a bonded project for water and wastewater, uh, I'm sorry, for wastewater, so this falls within that criteria.
That won't have any, that won't have any impact on any of our other impact fees, right, or in uh, capital?
No.
No.
No, when we, when uh, several years ago, back before, in two thousand sixteen, when we discussed uh, the bond package. We knew there would be so, a, a small shortfall, and we understood that we'd be utilizing uh, impact fees to cover any shortfalls we did come into.
Okay.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we've used the impact fees as much as we thought we might.
Correct, because bond council uh, guidance was to utilize, exhaust all bond funds before we even.
Right.
Started looking at impact fees.
Right.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? There being none, roll call, please?
Mayor Wallace?
Yeah.
Mayor Proton Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krubin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number six, consideration, discussion, possible action on a change order. To the construction contract for the wall, for the Willbarger Creek wastewater treatment and collection system. Improvements Phase Two Project, Frank?
Okay, so this project is the two offsite lift stations. Um, that um, are, are part of the bigger bond project. Um, and uh, there're really sort of two pieces to this change order, items one through four on there. Are uh, related to um, effectively replacing some existing city manholes.
Mm-hmm.
That are right and adjacent to um, and part of where we're putting in a new lift station. So we're, we're, we're taking several gravity lines and intercepting those. Um, that these lines used to drain to City of Austin, the new lift stations redirecting the flows back to the new plant. And um, when the contractor got in there and started doing his investigations, we knew that, we knew the, 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 the manholes were in pretty bad shape from the inspections that we had done. As, as they got further into it and started doing their pot hauling and checking things out. Um, they were like, these things are really sketchy. And um, you know, we recommend, at first they recommended to go in and do some reline, relining work. And uh, the number was higher than this, and, and we said, well, um, go back and take a look at it again, see what it would cost to replace, because. The two deepest manholes are right next to the lift station. And it's, it's, it's a deep lift station, twenty, almost thirty feet. And so they have to dig down anyway. And so if, if the city were to go in and replace these or reline them. It would cost at least as much or probably more to do it. At, at some other time as part of some other project, because the, the contractor will already have the bypass pumping in place. They'll already have the huge hole excavated, it'll actually make things, you know, uh, more constructible at the end of the day. And these were good prices for, for manhole replacement for this, this, these sizes and, and heights of manholes, so. We thought it was a good deal, the city could go in and, and get the advantage of um, you know. Getting these three manholes that are in pretty bad shape, taken care of now as part of this project. Um, the last two items are um, uh, have to do with uh, stopping some leaks when um. They, they pumped down and started cleaning out the wet well at the existing creekside lift station. Uh, discovered that there were some leaks that were going on below the water line into the wet well. And so that's flow that's constantly going into your system, it adds to the flow at your plant. Uh, you don't need to be treating groundwater, and so it makes sense to go in there and grab these leaks up to stop them, so that's what the last two items are. So um, that's the purpose of these changes, um, they're, they're a good value um, to go in and, and it, and I'd liken it. On those manholes, it's kind of like getting into an old truck, and you go in, you're gonna change out the water pump. And you pull the radiator and you look at it and go, oh my gosh, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna run with this radiator, and so. You know, what was a water pump turns into, you know, a new fan, a new radiator, you know, it just. Uh, cause it's a, an old set of manholes that have been um, uh, pretty, pretty chewed up over the years, so, so that's what this change order is about.
Got it, do I have a motion on the floor?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve change order number two to. Construction contract for the Willbarger Creek wastewater treatment and collection system improvements. Base two project with Austin Engineering Company, Inc. In the amount of forty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Alright, it's been so motion, do I have a second?
I second.
And seconded, any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion?
Oh, uh, this is uh, community impact fees as well?
Yes, this project is, is funded with impact fees, mhm.
That uh, that one percent, one point whatever percent overage?
Yeah, one point two nine.
What does that leave us, uh, balance wise with impact fees? Cause this is a total, that's almost a hundred thousand between the two projects.
There's, there's, oh, there's over five million dollars in that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we, we, it, it really doesn't impact it greatly.
Correct, it's not general fund.
No, yeah, I'm aware.
Any additional questions? There being none, roll call, please?
Mayor Wallace?
Yeah.
Mayor Proton Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krubin? Jean?
Are y'all mute?
Sorry, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That was correct.
Motion passes, agenda item number seven, consideration. This, uh, pretty fair, Frank, uh, consideration, discussion, impossible action on ordinance adopting. The amended annual budget for the city of Maynor for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty-twenty, and ending September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, Lydia?
Mayor, Council, uh, before you have an ordinance to amend the fiscal year uh, budget for twenty-twenty tw- through twenty-twenty-one. Um, the only change that is reflected on here is the funding. Uh, what I'm seeking is the funding and approval to establish the um, economic development director position. Which was taken to the budget committee. I'm sorry, which was uh, taken to the budget committee and was approved, uh, I, I'm sorry, it's approved and supported by the budget committee.
Alright, do I have a motion on the floor?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the general fun, excuse me. Approve the city budget that's been amended for twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one.
It's been so motion, do I have a second?
Uh, I think he might need to have the uh, say the ordinance piece.
The ordinance piece.
Ordinance number six oh five.
Number six oh six.
Oh, got it. Uh, Jean, do you amend your recommendation uh, for city council to approve ordinance number six oh five? Adopting the, six oh five, adopting the amended annual budget for the city of Maynor for the fiscal year. Beginning October first, twenty-twenty, and ending in September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one, is that a yes, you do?
Mayor?
Is it six oh six?
It's six oh six.
You did six oh six, okay, six oh six.
I had to take my glasses off and look.
And yes, I do.
No.
Alright.
It's six oh five.
Well, that's not what it says on the staff report, on the.
No, that's not what it says on staff report.
Um, mine says six oh five.
The mine is six oh six.
Mine too.
The number seven, item seven?
Oh, I'm on number eight, I'm sorry, my bad.
Okay.
I gotta head.
Alright.
Yes, I, I, I made it to, okay.
It is six oh five.
Yes.
Right, so Jean already said he did, he, he, he did approve, um.
Approved the amendment to uh, ordinance six zero five.
Alright, so it's been amended to that, do I have a second?
I'll second.
And seconded, questions to the motion?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead.
Um, I was wondering. Why? We have. A deficit of two hundred and eighty-five thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars in the general fund. And if that deficit's gonna be made up through the sales tax revenue or from the reserve fund?
That will be assessed in uh, as it's. So the deficit that you're seeing there is a combination of all the departments under the general fund. So we did the additional salary with benefits and everything for that position was an additional hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars. Um, and so that'll be made up hopefully with um, development services, because they're usually the ones who come in over. Um, rev- over in revenue, um, and if not, then the shortfall would, could be, would be covered by um, reserve funds.
Well. Please enlighten me again. What can we use the sales tax revenue for?
The sales tax revenue goes into the general fund, sir.
Okay, so that could be a remedy also.
Uh, it is already included in, under the admin revenue, um, so it's already, i- it's already in the, in that figure.
Yeah, that wouldn't be the typical.
That's just a projection, correct, that's just a projection. It could be more or less, and usually what we've seen in Maynor. With my time on the council, Lydia, with you being our financial advisor. Even bigger and more, correct?
That's true, uh, over the, over, that's been the trend over the last, uh, over the last year, we've been seeing an increase about twenty to twenty-seven percent yearly, so yes.
Okay, so, then you, you raised my. Question, and um, I'm very happy with that, thank you.
Okay.
You're gonna say something, Tom?
I just said annually, we take a very, very conservative approach to the budget for the year. Uh, with the realization that development services usually outperforms what we, what we anticipate, then. That does give us some monies to. Take on other expenditures that come up uh, during the year.
Any additional questions?
I'll just say that, um, yeah, the reason why we will move forward with it is a bunch of reasons, because uh, the conservatismness of, um. Lydia, so. Um, we all know that if we couldn't afford it, you would say we can't afford it.
I would certainly tell you.
But I know, I know you would too, Tom.
Facts.
Alright, any additional questions? There being uh, roll call, please?
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Krubin?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, motion passes, moving on to agenda item number eight. Consideration, discussion, and possible action on the ordinance authorizing the temporary suspension of certain residential building permit fees. Uh, that is Scott.
Evening, Mayor Council, um, so you may have seen like, um, a couple of other cities have done this too, um. So, uh, the intent basically for people who are recovering from storm damage, water damage to their homes, but. Um, this just suspends until April thirtieth. Uh, residential permit fees for plumbing, electrical, mechanical, and remodel. So that way if people need to fix what they, some damage they have, um, they won't be assessed permit fees from us.
Got it, uh, do I have a motion on the floor?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance number six oh six, authorizing a temporary suspension of certain residential building permit fees.
It has been probably motioned of a second?
Second.
And seconded, questions to the motion?
Questions, sir?
Go ahead.
Hey Scott, is there a reason we made such a short timeframe, because I realize some of the. Insurance companies are bogged down, not only with our state, with other states. Is there a reason for only two months? Um, whereas the federal government gave us. Three months and actually until June fifteenth to do our IRS taxes. Um, is there some way we could maybe amend that to be a little bit more. Of a friendly gesture to the people that need this done, because. I saw a picture of a house that had icicles on their fan. So I know they're gonna have plumbing, electrical, and roofing problems, so just that one picture. Uh, it stills me that we may wanna extend this now for a long time, maybe one month more.
Uh, yeah, I mean, you could do that, um, because most of the cities we saw was like a sixty-day thing, cause you know. If your water lines broke, you're gonna get it fixed, quick, fixed as quickly as a plumber can get to your house. So we figure most of the storm damage recovery would have happened within this two-month period, but if you wanna do it as three months, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I, I'm looking at. The, I'm not looking at the plumbing damage, I'm looking at the other damage. That would have happened from a two-story building or a two-story house. They had their pipe break upstairs, that actually went through the upstairs to the downstairs. And that means they have to do walls, ceiling, flooring, so that's. And that means they have to do walls, ceiling, flooring, so that's where I'm coming from.
Mm-hmm, and so, um, yeah, yeah, you could choose a timeframe that y'all feel is appropriate, but, um, permits are good for a hundred and eighty days and they can be extended for another hundred and eighty days, so if someone applies and receives a permit within that two months, it gets good for
Six months.
Life of their building, like.
Okay. Okay, thank you Scott, I did not know that, and that's why I brought this up to get more knowledge, thank you.
Any additional questions?
I think that was part of my question too, Scott, so, um, as long as they can come in, they still need to come in to get the permit, but it, the, the fee would be waived, so they still so it's still a legal fix with the city, right, with coding?
Yeah, yeah, all the, um, other permit requirements apply, so if you're hiring a contractor, you know, they need to be licensed and insured, that kind of thing.
And, and this will cover their inspections as well, yes?
Yeah, it's all the permit fees.
Right.
Oh, great, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, so as long as they get it in, within that timeframe, they'll still be good, but they definitely need to go and apply for it. And request it, thanks.
I'm sure if there's an overwhelming need after April thirtieth that, uh, or I should try to say if there is an overwhelming need after, after April thirtieth for whatever reason, can you let us know?
Yes, yeah.
Back to revisit this.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, this, we can revisit this if we need to.
Well, I'm, I'm with it.
Any additional questions?
So, so that I'm clear and you is clear, did we want to extend the date another thirty days or were we leaving it at the April thirtieth?
Uh.
I don't know, I don't recall what, it seemed like the motion might change.
Yeah, that, that's on Harvey.
Tom, I didn't want the motion to change, now that Scott has informed me that from the point of the application, they have a hundred and eighty days.
Okay.
That fulfills my requirements in my question.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear so that we didn't do anything that wasn't intended.
Okay, thank you, Tom.
Uh, go ahead, Harvey. Do you have something else to say?
No, I'm ready for both.
Okay, got it, uh, if there's no more questions, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouppen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes, moving on to agenda item number nine. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to appoint three brave souls to the capital improvements committee as council members and a chairperson to serve a one-year term. Do I have any, well, go ahead, do I need to hand it over to you first, Lydia?
No, I'm good, uh, it was just to, um, this is just to follow up with last week's, uh, last meeting that we had. Um, since we had not really established the committee nor appointed members, I just wanted to go and just bring it up, uh, to ca- to the council.
Got it, does anybody have any questions on the capital improvements committee? We, we talked about this last meeting, uh, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Harvey had talked about it, that, that internal kind of looking of roads and, and planning and, and, and strategizing, uh, realignment of potential, uh, 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 priority of funding and so forth. A- any, anybody need, uh, a refresher before we go into, uh, asking for nominations?
Okay.
All right, go ahead, Mayor Pro Tim.
Um, really, um, we were just having conversations about, um, overall economic development and um, looking at all projects that were happening simultaneously. And, um, I don't remember who it was, Lydia, but, uh, someone brought it up that this committee was, uh, pre-existing at some point in time, and it was, uh, there to accomplish uh, kind of the conversation we were having, so that's kind of what, why we want to come back to that piece, so we can have a more holistic discussion, to have a, have a committee that looks holistically at all of the work that's going on and said.
Is, uh, Frank, are you still on? Maybe he left.
Yeah, Scott, I believe Scott was the one that mentioned that there, there was a committee prior, uh, in, in prior years, there was a committee, but there was no, um, resolution or anything that had, uh, established this committee, and so we're just trying to go ahead and just establish it now, um. And, uh, and the staff that would be associated with this would be, um, would be, uh, Scott and Mike, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, and so it's kind of like, we're, we're already doing right now a lot of external uh, uh, um, meetings and, uh, discussions with entities that own uh, all the roads and infrastructures at the county and state level. Uh, but also saying, how do we can have that same type of discussion internally? Uh, with council and, uh, city hall personnel, a- any other, uh, internal assets uh, that we need to have, uh, the same thing as, uh, making the decisions, but also looking based off of, you know, we're gonna soon have the twenty fifty comprehension plan and so forth and saying, all right, uh, council and the administration, uh, council and city hall is in alignment that even though this is a priority based upon where we need to go, we need to pick, we, something else needs to be our priority. Um, tho- those hard decisions using this kind of committee to help guide that, and you already know some of the hard decisions we're gonna have to make just economic-wise, like, what do we do with Capital Metro? Um, you know, to open up cash flow, those types of things, and, um, having a committee to be able to do that internally with, uh, the different focuses and efforts and priorities the different departments have. Uh, how can we just make sure we're, we're giving that good discussion and great guidance uh, that sometimes may not be captured, uh, in a city council meeting?
And just to clear, the, and just to clarify, the capital improvements committee is more for the, um, for the improvements within our city limits with the guidance of our city engineer, uh, uh, and like I said, it, Mike would fall into this. So, not so much economic development in this portion of it. I- in this, in this particular committee.
Right.
And, and Mayor, if I could, I, I, I know Frank has as much history as I do. Um, I wouldn't mind sitting in, uh, to provide some of the, the background for some of the things that you've mentioned. Um, but Frank has also been here, well, much longer than I have and would be able to deliver that same information, so I, I think it's important that he's a part of it.
Hmm. All right, so, do we have any nominations? We need three names.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate myself, Gene Crouppen. I would love to work with, uh, Tom and Frank on this, since, uh, this is primarily what I'm really interested in for the city, so that we can, uh, move forward.
Sounds good, go ahead.
I, I just, I hadn't been mentioned, I volunteered, I just wasn't sure where we were with that.
Oh, well, this one is council member, so you're definitely gonna probably be on it regardless.
Okay, all right, I, I understand, but. No, no, I, I, I want to, I mean, there's, there's history here that I think is important to, to talk about.
No, thi- this, this falls in line, these committees fall in line, well, we, we've been talking about how we making sure council is, is more involved and abreast of what's going on as far strategy and the vision of, of the city, um, you know, so, this, no, this is three, three, uh, nominations from, from council.
Okay, no, and I understood that.
Okay, uh, anybody else, who else?
Nominate myself.
All right, and we need one more, anybody else wanna, wanna volunteer? Anybody wanna nominate Sonia? I mean, she's not here.
That's not nice.
I nominate Sonia.
All right, we'll, we'll ask her and see if she, if she will accept, um, uh, i- if she does not accept, does anybody want to, uh, fill her place?
I'll be the backup.
All right.
The back, back. I'm sure Anne has a lot of great history to share too, to bring. Not so much.
All right.
Good to have another budget person.
Okay, okay, well, I'll let you have that talk with her, there, Mayor Pro Tim. Um, and then, uh, out of you, out of, out of you all, who is going to, uh, nominate or self-select to be the chairperson?
I nominate, uh, Mr. Crouppen to be the chair.
Do you accept, Gene?
Yes, I do.
All right, so do I have a motion on the floor, uh, to for council to approve council member Gene Crouppa, Mayor Pro Tim, Dr. Chris Harvey, and contingent on her acceptance, councilwoman Anne, uh, councilwoman Sonia Wallace. As backup to that, councilwoman Deja Hill, with councilman Gene Crouppa being the chairperson for a one-year term.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion, um, for the appointment of three, um, capital improvement committee council members, being, um, a councilman, uh, Crouppa as chair, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, Dr. Harvey as, uh, council member. Um, and councilwoman Sonia Wallace as, uh, as a council member. Um, with, uh, councilwoman Deja Hill as backup, um, all to serve a one-year term.
All right, it's been so motioned of a second?
I second all of that.
And seconded by the person that didn't nominate. All right, any questions to the motion? There being none, roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Deja Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Crouppen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, motion passes, now moving on to executive session. City council will now convene into executive session pursuant to the provisions of chapter five five one, Texas Government Code, in accordance with the authority contained in section five five one point zero seven four, personal matters, and discussion of city man- managers' employment.
And Heath, you're gonna let us know when we're there?
Uh, yes, uh, council, mayor, uh, Tom, and I believe, uh, Tracy. But you're shortly gonna be getting a invite to a breakout room, as always, once you're done, you can just leave the room to return back to the main meeting. And if you have any problems, just let me know.
All right, you all hear me? Accidentally kicked out while transitioning back over. All right, so I now call uh city council now reconvene into open session pursuant to the provisions of chapter five five one. Texas government code and take action if any on items discussed during the closed executive session which would be agenda item number ten. The consideration discussion and possible action on an amendment to the city manager's contract. Do I have a motion on the floor?
Yeah, I have a motion. Yeah, but we're me- I have a motion, but we're missing two people.
Are we?
Yeah.
Jean is not in here yet.
Okay.
Yeah, we're missing councilwoman Weir as well. I don't know, um somebody can- or does Councilwoman Groupa- Groupa um.
All right.
And the city manager is gone. I'm not sure if there are any.
And 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 may have to have re-signed in like I did when I left the break room and made me need to sign back in.
Okay, I'm sure.
There she is.
Yeah, so she probably had to sign back in like I did. All right.
We need Tom?
No, we should be good.
If you guys didn't want me in the at in the meeting, you should have just said so.
All right, Tom's here. Uh Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry.
We want you there.
I don't know what I did, but I wound up back in the other room.
I have I have a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I have uh like to make a motion that we postpone um the amendment uh to this uh to the manager's contract until um the March seventeenth meeting.
I second.
Okay, there been probably motion and seconded. Any questions to the motion? Questions to the motion? There being none, uh roll call please.
Mayor Wallace?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Harvey?
Yes.
Councilmember Emily Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Weir?
Yes.
Councilmember Deidre Hill?
Yes.
Councilmember Groupa?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. I call this. All right, motion passes. I call this meeting adjourned at nine thirty P M. I will uh talk to y'all most likely if not tomorrow sometime before our next meeting.
Yes, sir. Good night, everybody.
Night.